Recording in progress.
All right. Call to order, the Wednesday, October 8th, 2025 Chaska Planning Commission meeting. Liz, would you take your role?
Commissioner Austin.
Here.
Aswa.
Here.
Campbell.
Here.
Kerber.
Here.
Purdy.
Here.
Rostud.
Here.
Saylor.
Here.
Urbanski.
Here.
And Chairperson Brass.
Here. With that, we'll move into adopting the agenda. I'll make a motion to adopt the agenda. Is there a second?
Second.
Kerber's second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Next on the list would be a visitor presentation. This would be anyone would like to address the commission on a topic that is not on the agenda tonight. So if there's someone here that would like to address the commission, now would be the time. I'd assume they're clear on that. And then we'll move on to approve previous meeting minutes. Does everyone have a chance to review those?
Make a motion to approve.
Urbanski, I will second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. With that, as consent items, there aren't none tonight, so we will move right down to action items. Action item 7A is a recommend approval of the concept plan for Zero Creek Road, Jen and Scott Schlatteroff.
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 Pretty close. PC 2025-15. Who's presenting?
I am.
Liz, would you take it away?
One second, I gotta share my screen here.
I'm just moving too quick for you, so.
Just want to verify you can see that in front of you on the screen. Okay, perfect. All right. Just gotta get my visuals right here. Okay. So we have a concept plan application in front of us this evening for the property that we're gonna refer to as Zero Creek Road, which is being proposed by Jen and Scott Schlatteroff. This exhibit is meant to show the adjoining uses of the site. The site in question this evening is highlighted in an orange-yellow outline in the center of this aerial exhibit. It's located within what we consider our southwest Chaska area. We have residential uses on the east side of the property and across Creek Road, as well as agricultural use abutting on the north and west sides that also encompass the property itself. Savannah Way and Creek Road and a roundabout that intersects those two roads is immediately south of this site. We have Highway 212 flanking the west side as well. And across the highway is industrial development and the city's future MSB site. Other adjoining uses include residential as well, so that's kind of the predominant context of this site. Just in terms of where we're at in the process, we do have a three-step process with the city for most land use applications that come through. So we're at the first step, which is concept plan, which is more of that high-level overview of the project. We're starting to identify issues and things to work on towards their more technical second-step analysis and the pre-plat. So you will see this application come through two more times. Just a little bit of a background. Jen and Scott Schlatteroff have resided in the city of Chaska for roughly nine years. They do own the property immediately east of the property in question this evening at 4080 Creek Road. They did purchase this property in 2024 with the intention to develop it into single-family use for their family to reside at. They did hold a neighborhood meeting back in August of this year. They did have two attendees at that meeting that did not propose any opposition to the project at that meeting, more so general questions or statements surrounding the site. So again, no stated opposition that we've heard from neighboring residents. The site in question, so an existing conditions exhibit is shown as on this screen here. The site itself is roughly eight acres in size. It currently does have access off of the roundabout at Savannah Way and Creek Road, which is kind of on that northwest corner of the roundabout. This is primarily used as a field access road, so to access the agricultural land kind of at the high point here for users to farm. That is primarily made of gravel, but has a curb cut again at that roundabout on the northwest side of the roundabout. The west portion of the site, as I mentioned, is mainly composed of agricultural use or an open field on that part of the property. And then the majority of the property, which runs kind of on the east side, is primarily composed of wooded steep slope, Chaska Creek, and additional wooded area. A permanent roadway easement also exists on the south side of the property, which is shown in brown overlay on this exhibit here, and that's roughly about an acre in size that comprises the property. And one thing of note that I'll show in subsequent images is that there is a significant grade change between this property and Creek Road. So the open field area sits roughly 34 feet higher than the roundabout. So there's quite a bit of grade change between the two areas. With the encumbrances on the property with the wooded steep slopes, Chaska Creek, and the permanent roadway easement, it really brings the buildable acreage down to 2.4 acres on this site. So the majority of the property is basically unbuildable due to the natural characteristics. The zoning of the property is in our open zoning district, which is a holding zone until it develops or redevelops. Then it would be rezoned to zoning district that's consistent with our comprehensive plan. Just a few images looking into the site and out of the site. So the top two images are looking from Creek Road at the roundabout. The upper-left image is right where that existing curb cut and field road access is today. The upper-right image is looking more northwest, kind of where Creek Road are on the east side of the roundabout, essentially looking northwest. As you can see, kind of that high grade change. And then the bottom two images are looking from on top of the site. So the bottom-left image is looking from kind of that high point, looking south across the roundabout and Savannah Way. And then the bottom-right image is looking more north into the open field area there. The concept plan is what is being requested this evening, which entails the proposal for three single-family lots. There's two lots proposed, and then there's a third lot that's proposed as an outlot, so for future plating or future development when they're ready for that. The two lots in question are on the north and central portion of the site. The outlot is proposed on the southern portion of the site. Lot one, what we'll refer to it as, is the largest of the lots on the north side and is comprised of 3.5 gross acres. Lot two is that center lot, which is comprised of 1.8 acres gross acres. And then Lot three, or the outlot, is 1.6 acres in size. The setbacks proposed are a 30-foot front setback, a side setback of 15 feet, and a rear setback of 30 feet. They're also showing setbacks from the wooded steep slopes, which have been previously delineated on-site, as well as the setbacks that are from the edge of that wooded steep slope, which is a 50-foot building setback and a 30-foot no-grade, no-mow setback. A shared driveway is proposed to provide access to the two proposed lots. So this, again, will be a common shared access that both of the lots will be able to use. And that is historically what we've allowed for shared driveways, is up to two homes or lots can utilize a shared driveway. Three or more lots entail providing a public road or a private road meeting city standards. Each of the lots will have their own city sewer and water. Due to them being in the municipal urban service area, they are required to connect to city utilities, which they are planning to do with this proposal. And then the homes that they plan to build, and again, this is for their family, they have a few example images of the homes that they wish to build on both of those lots. Related to the comprehensive plan, the comp plan guides this area for low-density residential, for basically that open area that we've highlighted before. The majority of the site is shown as open space, which essentially overlays on top of the wooded steep slope areas or wooded areas and creek areas. And also proposed in the long-range or comprehensive plan is a plan for a local road that would run north up to Angler Boulevard. In terms of the proposed use for detached single-family, it is consistent with the low-density residential guidance for the site. And when we get into the definition of low-density residential in our comprehensive plan, it provides a guidance of two to five dwelling units per net acre threshold within that. So based on what is being proposed for three lots, they're at 1.25 dwelling units per net acre. So they are below that threshold that is defined in the comprehensive plan for low-density residential. And I'll get into kind of the analysis and details on that in some subsequent slides. And then the comprehensive plan also guides this area to have a local road extension come off the north side of that roundabout. And again, it would connect north up to Angler Road. It would be a two-lane local road, as I mentioned. With the development that's proposed this evening, it does not warrant the construction of this road. It's just not a high-density, high-traffic development that requires the need for that road to go in at this time. What we've advised from the beginning is that the need of this road, the location and the design, would be determined at a later date when additional surrounding development would occur and essentially necessitate the need for that road to go in.
Are you, is that, are you supposed to be on a different slide? The roads, are you, or is this still that right?
Yeah, I'm just going over the comp plan guidance. I'll have some other visuals for us to take a look at.
There's other pictures like the road and stuff?
Yes, yep, some more zoomed-in visuals, if you will. In terms of the analysis that we've provided in the staff report, and just to give kind of a high-level overview of that as well, there are a few challenges that exist on this property to try to meet or get to that two-to-five density threshold that's defined here. So the challenges that come into play are the buildable acreage of the site being only 2.4 acres out of eight acres of the total property size. As we mentioned before, there is significant topography that exists between the road and up to the high point of the property, so it does take away some buildable area because of that grade change between those two components. The wooded steep slopes encumber a majority of the property, which really put the buildable area kind of on that west side of the property. There are also limits with the access, too. They are utilizing an existing access point that they will enhance or revamp as a part of this development proposal. But there are limitations there in terms of where that can go with the significant grade changes. And then with kind of all those pieces overlaid on top of each other, it really creates an irregular-shaped area for properties to be built on. And some of the goals and objectives that have been stated by the applicant, but also are shared by staff, is due to the sensitivity of the environmental features there with the wooded steep slopes, trying to minimize environmental impacts on that as much as possible with the development is a huge goal. And then at the same time, maximize density as much as possible to get as close as possible to that two-to-five density threshold. So we've had quite a few discussions with the applicant prior to a concept plan submittal to try to advise them through this process. And a few of the points brought up during those discussions was for them to show or provide a ghost plan for how the development can fit into the long-range plan for the overall area, both from a density standpoint and from a future roadway standpoint. And then if physically they are not able to achieve that on their own site, is there ways where they can show that it can be achieved from the surrounding areas and show that holistically it's going to meet that long-range vision out there? So in some, we advise them to show a plan that does not preclude achieving the comprehensive plan's density and roadway guidance for the area. So the applicant did put together three ghost plans in response to that advisement to show how the proposed development can fit into kind of what's known at this point for the vision for this area. One plan, which is shown on the left-hand side in what we call the Ghost Plat Sketch, basically depicts a future condition for just this property in question, while showing the location of a future road extension coming north off that roundabout. In doing so, they're also showing some conceptual grading limits, too, to show how the proposed development can still be achieved and not preclude the extension of a roadway from the north side of the roundabout. So the proposed development is shown in green, and the roadway improvements are structurally shown in red. And again, this is an exercise to show that what they're proposing can still fit into the long-range vision there. They did put another exhibit together that we'll refer to as Ghost Plat R1A, which is one of the city's low-density residential zoning districts. And this was depicted to show how the project site and how it can fit into overall developments with the properties to the north and to the west, and how comprehensively everything fits together with it meeting the standard zoning requirements. They're basing this completely off of what the comprehensive plan shows in terms of the land use guidance out there, so they're showing where the open space, the roadway extension, and where the low-density residential areas were shown on that plan. And then applying the R1A zoning district standards on top of that, and including the grading limits for the roadway. Doing so from a density standpoint, it shows getting to a 1.3 dwelling units per net acre threshold here, just using the city's standard zoning district requirements. And then the other Ghost Plat put together is what we'll refer to as Ghost Plat Two Units, which is essentially the same thing as the last one, but this is one where they're making the density higher to get to that two dwelling unit per net acre threshold, and showing how the proposed development can fit into that. So unless development goes through a PRD process and proposes smaller lots through that process, they can get to that two dwelling unit per net acre threshold with that one. But all of these exercises or plans, again, were to show how that proposed development can fit into that long-range vision for the overall area. To continue the conversation on zoning and density, since this is primarily the biggest conversation piece, the current zoning, as we mentioned, is an open zoning district, so it does need to get rezoned in their preliminary plat phase. And with the guidance being low-density residential, the zoning district that would have to be pursued during that rezoning would have to be consistent with that. So we did provide an analysis on two different directions that the applicant could go from a zoning district standpoint to meet that guidance and kind of lay out those minimum standards or maximum standards that are defined in our code. So that's purely what the table on this exhibit or on this slide shows. It's also included in the staff report, too, depicting going a standard zoning district route with R1B or going the route towards a PRD district. I think either option are a suitable option. It's up to the applicant to figure out what makes the most sense based on what they're proposing. So they will have to determine in their preliminary plat stage what district to pursue and how their plan meets the defined standards. The R1B, just to give one highlight there, does have a max density of 1.7 dwelling units per gross acre. So even with a standard zoning district, we can see some inconsistency with our standard zoning district in our comprehensive plan, which we're working through as a part of our audit right now. So just a few things to work on as they pursue the next step or for preliminary plat and rezoning. They will have to complete a tree inventory and preservation plan with that next step to understand what those potential impacts could be to the areas outside of what's protected by wooded steep slope and setbacks. If there are opportunities to preserve as much as possible, that would be the goal there. And then determining what zoning district to apply for in their rezoning application. So with that, we are asking you to make a motion this evening to recommend approval of the concept plan for the three-lot subdivision at Zero Creek Road, and then based on the conditions that are listed in the staff report. If this moves forward this evening, the city council date that this would go in front of would be Monday, October 20th. So not next Monday, but the following Monday. I'm happy to answer any questions. We do have the Schlatteroffs in the audience as well, if you have specific questions for them. Thank you.
Thanks, Liz. First, I'll just bring it back to commission. It's technically not a public hearing tonight, but we certainly will open it up if someone would like to address the commission and talk to us or answer any questions. But before we do that, I've got a couple of questions for staff, if anyone else does, too, like I started off. And it kind of just goes, it's all kind of centered around the road. Just curious, I know it's only at concept, but obviously the initial driveway is gonna be that offset kind of curb cut that already exists to the side. And so this is kind of minor stuff, but, you know, using that for now and being its offset and coming around that curve, it's Creek Road's gonna probably wind up being, is a heavily traveled road. Maybe there's a private drive sign so people don't get confused. That's probably a benefit of the applicant. Two, for the future right-of-way, are we envisioning retaining walls there or is it gonna go uphill up that grade? Any idea?
Hard to say right now.
Okay, 'cause the question that kind of goes into that then is how does Lot One access that future? It doesn't show, I mean, I see on Lot Two and Three, the driveway, kind of how it ties into the road potentially, but it doesn't show Lot One, so I think we'd want to see that at prelim, how a potential house driveway would access that road?
And when you say Lot One, are you talking about the south lot?
Yeah.
Okay.
Is that what's called Lot One?
Sure. Or the outlot.
The outlot.
Is that the outlot?
That's the outlot.
Is that not gonna be a house there, then?
Three and Two will be in the future.
In the future.
Future. You'd have to put in a road.
So in the future, if there is gonna be, it'd be interesting, I think we should see how it works before we just say, yeah, it sounds great. Because there is that slope there, and so maybe it kind of ties in. I don't know, you know? It's just a note that I don't see a potential driveway there. Let me see here. Yeah, I think that's basically it for the road question. Otherwise, in general, for the development, the houses, I understand we've got a density, you know, solved here, but I think it seems fine to me. Does anyone have any questions for city staff?
What is, can you talk a little bit about the history of the, what would, I would consider the extension of Savannah Trail up through that property there? Was it, was it ghost-platted at one time for that or?
No, there haven't.
Just the concept?
Yeah, there haven't been any previous proposals or land use requests for this area. The inclusion of the local road is purely coming from our long-range plan and the potential of providing that extension up to Angler Boulevard. I think the big question is the need for that road. It's safe to say right now, just with this development proposal, that a public roadway is not needed to support the traffic for this density here. And it's, at this point, because we don't know how the rest of the area is going to develop, it's really hard to say the need for that or when it will be needed. And it's purely gonna be driven by what Ekstrom's property, which is the property to the north, is going to shape out to be. It's also guided low-density residential, but that could be a whole variety of ways to look at that just based on how our comprehensive plan guides it for.
And it's not really my concern, but my concern is for the people that are potentially building on it here is you have these conversations and you say, well, nothing's gonna happen there for five, 10, maybe 20 years. And then next month, there's a bulldozer parked out there, right? So just wanted to make you aware of that.
Mm-hmm, yep.
Going back to the road then, too, so obviously on the development and recorded will be the right-of-way for the future road if it's ever needed. Until then, they're gonna use this small- Until then, they're going to use this smaller private drive. Obviously, both owners at this point are family and they're going to use that drive. I would assume either way, though, because it's not always going to be like that at some point, you know? Just to make sure there's some sort of access agreement, cross-access easement for both owners of those properties to utilize that drive for the future, so there's not some potential issue with, you know, if they ever sell and a new owner comes in and they're not family and they don't get along or whatever, so.
Yep. We do have a condition of approval that addresses them providing one of those.
Perfect.
Yep.
Okay. In terms of a concept, I think it shows what we need to see. There's more information needed for prelim, but I think it's, I'm in support of it. Is there any other questions for anybody? Does anyone have questions for the applicants? Are we going to let everyone get off easy tonight?
Still early.
It's a unique piece of land that's hard to do anything with, so.
Liz, the ghost plats, are those, that's not their land, that's Ekstrom's land?
Yeah, the ones that are colored, that are showing extension to the north there, they're showing that on Ekstrom's property.
Property, right?
Yep. And it's purely meant as an exercise to show how comprehensively they can eventually get there.
You know how I love ghost plans?
I know.
This is not approved.
Are those going to be recorded?
What?
The ghost plans?
No.
Thank you.
Yep, these are purely just for kind of a demonstration purpose of showing how, it can't preclude, you know, a long-range plan from happening and they're trying to maximize as much as possible. So that's all it really is, to help facilitate that discussion.
For the audience, if you run into issues where a ghost plan is recorded and then people think that's the way it has to be.
Right.
It causes problems. Okay.
I'll make a motion to recommend approval to the city council of a concept plan for Zero Creek Road, subject to the following nine provisions.
I will second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. You guys will be at city council on the 20th. Moving on to the next one would be 7B, recommend approval of the concept plan for the PV Business Center. Is that you as well, Liz, or is that you, Ashley?
It'll be me.
All right. Why don't you take it away?
I'll move this over without trying to. One second here, I've got to switch over. Okay. The second item on tonight's agenda is also a concept plan. This one is located up in the northeast corner of the city, 82nd Street to the north and then Norwex Street, and essentially the city of Chaska and city of Chenhassen border follow those. And so the site that we're looking at this evening is really located kind of in the center of that industrial business park in that northeast corner. We're frozen. Well, that concludes my presentation this evening.
That's really good.
All right.
That's not good.
That was ominous. That was like, yeah, I don't know. You know, I do like a little flair, so just wanted to make sure you all were awake this evening. We're going to try that one more time. Oh, and now we've added effects. Oh, nice. There we go. So Liz went over our three-step process here in Chaska, so I won't repeat that. But again, we're in that first phase, so our plans this evening are at a high level and our review is also that. Just quickly, giving a project overview, the concept plan is for a 18,000-square-foot building, industrial building with some outdoor storage. The applicant is Shaw Construction. Two tenants have already been identified that are hoping to occupy that new building. They are here this evening, Southwest Rental and Sales and Crimson and Copper Plumbing. The site itself, prior to 2018, so back in 1986, the site was included in the PID2 zoning district. That district really established the standards and the setbacks for the buildings within that kind of northeast industrial project. Included in that zoning district was also a prohibition for outdoor storage on properties along Highway 41. In 2018, all of those properties were rezoned to PID8, another industrial district. None of the standards really changed, however, it clarified and updated some industrial setback and then also introduced setbacks for industrial from residential, because there was a new residential development that went in, in the city of Chenhassen over to the east. And so that new district was really recognizing kind of changing conditions. In 2005, the city approved Chaska business lots for this site. It really was for three business, or excuse me, three buildings, each roughly 6,000 to 8,000 square feet, for a total of 15 tenants. So each of those buildings was going to have five individual tenants. Their approval included a number of things, including site and building plan approval and plat, which really, that's how we got to the configuration that the lot is in today. Some of the conditions of approval coming out of those 2005 approvals included some enhanced screening requirements along Highway 41 and then a cross-access agreement that we'll talk about a little bit more this evening. And then again, those approvals reiterated that there was no outdoor storage approved as part of the project. The site today is 2.74 acres. It's currently vacant. The highest point of the property is really along the center part of that northern property line, and then the site slopes downwards in all directions. The site from Highway 41, kind of roughly to about the first two-thirds of that site are pretty flat. There is about a 20-foot grade change as you drop down from that flatter center part down to PV Road to the east. There's also a type-one wetland that was identified within kind of the right-of-way ditch, if you will, of 41, and some of that wetland does extend onto the site. And then that cross-access agreement is shown, that cross-access agreement area, if you will, is shown here in red. And that agreement, again, was a condition of approval coming out of the Chaska business lots approval, and it was really benefiting both this property as well as to the property to the south.
But that will be, looking for that to be dissolved, right?
I'll talk a little bit more about it as we get a little closer. I think there's a couple different options for how to move forward, but staff is still really evaluating what the implications of those cross-access agreements and what obligations the city has to ensure that those conditions or standards, if you will, are met. So we have to evaluate what our role is in that and then also what implications the site improvements would have if they're not constructing what was covered in that agreement. So that's still part of our analysis. The concept plan itself really has two phases. So the first phase that's here this evening, again, the building has 12,000 square-foot footprint. There is a 6,000-square-foot mezzanine, so a second level over roughly half of it totaling 18,000 square feet. The building itself would be 28 feet tall with then some two-foot parapets to add some visual interest and then also provide some screening opportunities. Building materials are brick and precast aggregate panels with glass and metal accents. And then again, there is outdoor storage that's being contemplated with this concept plan. And that outdoor storage area is roughly 11,700 square feet, and the applicant is showing that they would screen that outdoor storage with an eight-foot wood fence, and they've incorporated some brick accents at the corners to tie in some of the building materials out into that screening area. The request, the architect has also included six signage areas for the six tenants within the building. They've matched that sizing to be what was allowed by the PID8 district. But again, those signs would be evaluated at the time that a signed permit, after the building's constructed and with signed permits. The plan also includes 31 parking stalls generally located in the east side of that new building. In order to meet what our code requirements are for the current uses, they're showing an additional 15 parking stalls within that outdoor storage area to meet those requirements. The phase two that's shown on the plan, that phase would require additional review outside of our current three-step review, and they're showing a 9,000-square-foot building with some additional parking stalls on the eastern side of the site. Oops, going the wrong way. So going through our analysis of the project, the proposal would meet the 2040 comp plan land use for industrial. And generally, the uses that they're proposing within the buildings would meet the uses outlined in the PID8 zoning district. But as you'll note here and as noted in your report, the outdoor storage is not currently allowed within the PID8 district for properties along 41. So that would require a zoning amendment in the next phase. While we're not currently reviewing that, staff did take a look at that request from a reasonability standpoint at a really, really high level. Generally, we would find that that request to amend it would be reasonable if they're able to show that they're reasonably screening what they're storing inside of that outdoor storage area from the adjacent properties as well as from the adjacent right-aways. But we'd really want to take more time to evaluate, you know, how can we mitigate impacts to those adjacent properties if outdoor storage was allowed? And then what other implications would that be if we allowed outdoor storage here to other properties within the PID8 district? So we continue to evaluate that. But we did, staff did have some preliminary conversations with the applicant, you know, looking at potential conditions of approval if we were to allow outdoor storage. And one of the things that we had preliminarily talked about was restricting the height of whatever is stored within that outdoor area to whatever the height of the fence is. So in this case, eight feet, so nothing stored within there could exceed that height. The applicant did then submit those photos that were included in your packet this evening to show that, you know, what they intend to store out there would meet that threshold. And as noted in your report this evening, it would be helpful for the planning commissioners knowing that you're not locked into a final decision, but if you would provide some feedback about whether the outdoor storage would be reasonable, that would be helpful for staff moving into that next phase, but then also for the applicant as they continue to refine their plans. Looking at the building, the facade materials are generally appropriate. They're meeting the thresholds outlined in code for class one and two materials. Generally, the building meets that. Class three materials are only introduced for that wood fence around the outdoor storage. And setbacks would meet what would be allowed for buildings within the PID8 district. Looking at access, access to the site is coming from PV, so there's no access coming from Highway 41 as is required. And generally, the proposed amount of setbacks, or excuse me, parking would meet what is required for current land uses. However, as noted in your report, the parking ordinance does have a provision that requires additional proof of parking for warehouse area, and that's really to ensure that there's adequate parking provided if there's a conversion of that space into a more intensive land use, such as office or retail space. And so that's where there's that additional deficit that we would want to work with the applicant to ensure that we're finding space for those 18 additional stalls on the property as we move into preliminary. The parking lot itself, so kind of looking at access moving through the site and then also that parking lot to the east, it is meeting the setbacks from adjacent right-aways to the east and west, but the setbacks are currently shown at five feet from the north and south property lines. That would be compliant if this property was just being regulated by our industrial base district. However, the PID8 district did increase those side yard setbacks from five feet to 10 feet for parking lots, and so we would work with the applicant to ensure that we're complying with those additional feet. And then we would continue to work with the applicant to then understand if we're increasing those setbacks, what implications do we have to the site circulation plan to ensure that our fire trucks are able to navigate the site? It's currently showing that it can meet that. We just want to make sure that we're continuing to ensure that that can happen. And again, as I mentioned earlier, we want to continue to evaluate what the city's obligation and role is and in evaluating that cross-access agreement, knowing that the items that are addressed in that agreement aren't being constructed as part of this plan. And if those site improvements that they are proposing, what implications would happen if they would essentially inhibit future construction of them? So we're still evaluating that from a legal perspective. This diagram is just really showing that utilities are available to the site from PV, so they would be extended into the site. And then stormwater would be collected and directed to one of two basins, one on the eastern side and then one on the southeastern side, or southeastern side of the site. The applicant has been working with staff to, well, the applicant has met with staff, I guess, several times over the course of the summer to work through some of our concerns. And the plan that's before you this evening is really the culmination of a lot of those conversations. They really worked in good faith to try to address a lot of those concerns. They also held a neighborhood meeting on August 21st. They invited the 16 properties, which is our standard notification area, and no one So looking forward, if this project were to move forward, there's a couple things that would need to happen. The first would be preliminary and final plat. The applicant could opt to just combine the lots through the county. That wouldn't come before this board, but they could essentially do that ahead of the next phase. And that's really to reconfigure those lot lines that were previously established as part of the Chaska Business Lofts project. The second would be site and building plan review for that new building and the associated site improvements. And then the third would be that zoning ordinance amendment to allow the outdoor storage. So things that, again, kind of summarizing what we would look for ahead of preliminary, ensuring that those parking lots are, setbacks are compliant, and then adding those additional stalls for the warehouse conversion. We would look for a submitted tree inventory and landscaping details as well as an illumination plan. We would look to have updated plans reflecting those changes, and then we would continue to evaluate tree preservation, the cross-access easement implications, and then outdoor storage. So again, while we're acknowledging that a discussion doesn't, again, guarantee any final or future decision by you as the planning commission, we would find that your feedback would be really useful and beneficial to both us as staff and the applicant on whether you feel the proposed outdoor storage and what they're proposing to use as screening would be reasonable enough for you to consider support of a future zoning ordinance amendment. And then I would look for a motion to approve the concept. And then I would look for a motion to approve the concept plan. So I'll turn it back to you if you have, for any questions.
Thanks, Ashley. So just for clarity for everyone, the motion tonight for the concept plan does not include the approval of outside storage, but it is recommended for us to discuss it to see what we feel so the applicant understands where we stand on it.
Correct, yep. So included as a condition of approval, it does state that no outdoor storage would be allowed until that zoning ordinance amendment occurs.
Say that again?
Included in, as one of your conditions of approval, no outdoor storage would be permitted until that zoning ordinance amendment is approved.
Right, yep, okay. Okay, again, this is the same kind of format. It's not a public hearing tonight, however, you're here, and if you have questions for us, we certainly, I'll encourage you, you can come to the podium and ask them. Before I would do that, though, I'm going to bring it back to the commission so we can discuss and ask staff questions, and then we can get feedback if needed, or we can ask you questions as, as needed. So first, in general, I, I think the development looks good. I think the building looks fine. It's a piece of land that's available to develop. I don't have any strong issues with it, other than what staff has outlined on the setbacks and the trees, and got to figure out the outside storage at a later date, but get our talk on it. So yeah, in general, I guess I'm, I'm pretty open to it. Parking, you know, kind of proof-of-parking, figure that out. We can touch on the outside storage in a minute. Anyone else have questions for staff or anything specific?
I like it, I'm just, I have some concerns with the outside storage.
But it looks like it's going to be pretty much covered. I mean, that, that's a nice concept that they're throwing out there with a gate and two areas of brick pillars. I mean, I think it's going to look very professional.
Right now, is that Restoration Systems in there right now that are, who's, who's got the, is there's?
It's vacant, I think.
Is it completely vacant? There's nothings out there?
Yeah.
Yeah, it's just land now, but there'll be two tenants in the building, I think, right?
I was just looking at whatever those pictures that were submitted.
Yeah. The, oh, that's their existing, that's their existing location.
Just showing the equipment.
They're relocating, yep. With all the stuff like in the back.
Yeah, all the shipping containers.
Yeah, that's their existing area, or existing, existing spot. So they're relocating.
Okay.
I'd be happy to answer, clear some of those up.
Thank you.
Sure, yep. That's fine. State your name and address, please.
Yeah, Earl Gabeauer, Shaw Construction, Janhassen, Minnesota. Thanks for hearing us. Shaw, I'm Shaw Construction. I'm making application actually on behalf of the owners that are here. Craig with Southwest Equipment Rentals and Mike with Crimson Copper Plumbing. So to answer your question on the pictures, Craig owns Southwest Equipment Rentals in a building that is owned and operated by Restoration Systems.
Okay.
So we were trying to illustrate that what is not coming.
Got it, okay.
Versus what is coming. Yeah, so the Restoration stuff is not coming.
Got it, I got it.
Perfect.
Relative to outdoor storage, my dad has been the general manager of A-Z Rental since before I was born, so I understand the value of having that area for equipment, trailers, things of that nature. Is there other value to having it and making it pretty, other than you need a place to put the equipment when it's not in use?
Are you referring to like the storage area, the?
Yeah.
You're talking about the outside storage, right?
Yeah.
I mean, our preference would not to be screened, but it needs to be secured.
Okay.
At the end of the night, for safe, or security reasons. But when it comes to, you were talking, Commissioner Purdy, about the screening, it's intentionally in the back, the building really screens all of the storage area. The side businesses to the north and the south screen most of the side of the storage area too, along with strategically placed landscaping, so it's, and then the fence.
Okay.
Yeah, and then the fence, so, yeah, so it's.
So what, just to delineate the pictures, what is the primary product, let's just call it product, or vehicles, what will, that will be stored in the outside storage?
I want to let Craig with Southwest.
Yep, then please state your name and address.
Craig John Garius, Southwest Rental and Sales. I live in Wacony, Minnesota. Southwest Rental and Sales primarily does party rental for graduation parties, weddings, outdoor events, including for the city of Chaska, we have in the past. We do small equipment and tool rental, so everything from floor sanders to drywall sanders and nailers and carpet cleaners and anything you can think of, pressure washers, all of the lawn care equipment, sod cutters, dethatchers, aerators, whatever you can think of. If you think you can, you can rent it, we rent it. And then we do small, what I would call, small industrial use equipment, some dirt-moving equipment, mini excavators, skid loaders, but most of our stuff is really on the smaller side. So anything you rent from us does not require a CDL license, so everything is under twelve thousand five hundred pounds. We have some larger trailers and some reasonably decent-sized equipment, but when I say that, it would be just full-size skid loaders. And when we say mini excavators, I think that's the tallest thing on our lot, is right at eight feet, basically. Towable air compressors are busy this time of year, so we have a handful of towable air compressors that do irrigation blowouts and that type of thing this time of year. And then we are a Husqvarna dealer, we're a Honda dealer, and we're a small engine service center. So I have a full-time mechanic, part-time mechanic that wrench on customer equipment as well as our equipment. And as far as the storage goes, the fencing would be required for our security. When we started this process the first time, let's say, a little more than a year ago, correct? It was very much recommended that, what's the type of fencing? Yeah, chain-linked fence with slats was not recommended. Don't come to us with that and ask for outdoor storage. So that's how we came up with the eight-foot wooden fence, roller gates that are in the exact same color as the building, so it all matches, and then the screening that we're working on now, so.
And what, what, what primary product do you think would be outside, in the outside storage area?
So what we would keep outside is going to be our larger industrial equipment, primarily, there's going to be a lot of trailers. So we have, I think I counted, twenty-two trailers. A lot of that stuff is small, right? So six-foot, eight-foot, ten-foot-long trailers, utility trailers for different usage, small enclosed trailers for moving your college kid, or, you know, whatever. So a lot of those small trailers can get in a pretty small area. Some of the larger trailers for equipment rental would be a little bit more sizable. But a lot of trailers outside, and then a few of those pictures I took was what we call our cage. What's in our cage is going to be our larger equipment, like the skid loaders, the excavators, the towable air compressors. I missed towable chippers. We do have lift equipment that you can see in that cage, but none of it is the stuff that Restoration has. So what, those are, those are called stick booms or, or large lifts. Those large drivable lifts, we don't have any of, we don't have any plans for them because you would need a class A or class B driver's license to tow them, and we don't have requests for them. In general rental, what we do, general rental primarily focuses on homeowners that need lawn care equipment, that need remodeling equipment for working on their homes, that type of thing, and small contractors. So we work with a lot of lawn care and landscape companies. We work with a lot of remodelers. We work with a lot of small kind of handyman-type, type outfits that don't own all of that equipment themselves.
Sure.
Okay, thank you. My, my concern is if we allow outside storage for them, are we going to have other businesses in that district come back to us and say, hey, we want outside storage, so?
Yeah, so that is a fair concern, and just to kind of let in on the rest of the commission, staff and I talked this morning and kind of talked through that, and so I'll continue on with that thought process and let you know where I sit as well. I, I, for all of you who probably already know, I'm an industrial guy. The properties that I have where my tenants are in the back, we already see a lot of trailers and trucks, and generally, we don't even, it depends on which municipality, is that considered outside storage or not, you know? A lot of people have trucks that go with their work and, and trailers and, and whatnot. I am in general in okay with the outside storage, as long as it's behind the building, limited to fence height, and enclosed by the screening, by the, by the, by the fence itself. And it also, I would think it would need to be recorded that it's a secondary use or accessory use to the primary use of the building itself. Therefore, in the future, if the building ever changes hands, it's not the primary use of a new person coming in to buy the building, and all of a sudden you find out that it's a, I don't know, you know, that rental car place, or, or some other thing where the building becomes secondary and the outside storage becomes primary, now you're kind of getting into a scenario where that changes to what it is today. And so, again, we're not approving outside storage tonight, but if we were to approve this at the prelim, I think fence height within the boundaries of the fence and behind the building. Touch back on Urbansky's concern, it's my, was my concern too. City staff has suggested that they would craft the amendment, that it's specific to this property, and not the whole district, which is great for the applicant, but it would, again, we've kind of talked through this precedent isn't a legal thing, but it is difficult to deny a future business owner when they're standing in front of you, you know, complaining and saying, well, this guy hasn't right on the road, you know? So that's a difficult thing to, to say no to in the future. So it might not be a legal issue by giving it to one person or another, but you could expect there would be a potential that someone in the future is like, well, hey, I'm in this district and I want outside storage. So we, so there is that consideration that, that that could take place. You know, if you're looking at, I'm looking at the properties, there's not a lot of properties that could potentially do that, and they'd have to follow the minutia of the city and see that this guy has it, and if you're tucked in here and it's properly screened, it's not breaking the fence, I mean, it's not obtrusive, it's, you're probably not going to draw a lot of attention, but yes.
Well, PB Road is not that heavily traveled.
Totally, right? So I mean, as long as you're not seeing it from forty-one and it's, you know, it's tucked behind the building, I, I think it's, you do open yourself up to that. And it, we couldn't, we could deny it later to someone else or hear their case and know that, you know, there may be a case or two in the future that comes before us when buildings trade, trade hands, or whatever the scenario is.
Would it be possible to tie like a conditional use permit to the outside storage? So that if the building were to sell in five years, they need to expand and go bigger space, that there's some, there's some save from the city's perspective of what the next tenant can do with it that way?
Chair and Commissioner, that's certainly something we can look into. Whenever you have a conditional use permit, you have to assign certain conditions that, you know, assuming they're able to meet them, they would be able to continue using the use in that manner. So a conditional use could be one option. The other option would be to essentially set the standards within the district specific to that property. So then anytime they want to, they being the, the owners or the tenants within that building want to make changes, we're constantly going back to that zoning district to look at that specific standard, so.
So, oh, sorry. Conditional use permits are filed on title and, and they're there for, so the next owner can actually use it too. So that winds up, you know, it could wind up being with the property, and so you'd have to be specific on conditions, and then it gets tricky. What about an interim, do we, what about an interim use permit, an IUP? I'm seeing, I'm seeing a Noah there.
Chair, I just asked the community development director if the city has done an interim use permit in the past. It doesn't sound like we've done that.
Okay.
But that is, that is another, that is another tool. Interim use permits, though, typically have a sunset of some type, so whether you have to come up with some metric for where that permit would no longer be valid.
Yeah. So let's just kind of throw in a thought out there. I know other municipalities, actually, had clients have done that, but again, whether it's a CUP, IUP, or we just amend it for this specific property, nonetheless, no matter what we call it, there is the risk that someone in the future says, I want it too. So, talking out loud, I would rather not amend language for the whole district. I would keep it to this property specifically. And, you know, the benefit here is this is a vacant piece of land, and.
It's an infill project.
It's an infill project, and it's something that we make a judgment call on versus something that's already been developed, and that judgment call was made years ago on the rest of the property. So in seeing what they're proposing, and the buildings on both sides, and the nice fencing, it's a small area, it's not like the primary use where you're having like a junkyard or something. I, I personally think, in theory, if it were to come back in preliminary plat, and they meet all conditions, everything else, I think it's workable for me.
I agree. It's essential to business operations for the businesses who are seeking to develop land. I don't think you could operate without it, to be honest. I do wonder if we could also add to next steps, like making sure that security is commensurate to the value of the equipment that is going to be in that area. I know it's probably something that's weighing on the minds of the potential developers as well, but once people realize what it is and that it's there, it, it could be a targeted area for growth.
Well, just to be clear, I, I like what you're doing here. It's, it's a cool-looking infill project. You're, you're taking a piece of land that, the second one tonight, that's kind of unique and challenging to do anything with, and you guys have kind of filled it up nicely. Kind of coloring outside the lines a little bit, but that's kind of cool, too, so.
But you are currently landlocked where you are, right? The building, you guys are outgrowing the building and the storage?
Current.
Where, where we currently lease from Restoration Systems, they've told us we can no longer renew our lease. So our lease is up in the end of 2026. That's after he gave me a one-year extension. So at the end of 2026, we will have to find a law.
Well, at least you got a little good warranty.
We would, we'd be moving a quarter of a block, or about a hundred and fifty yards from where we're currently located to where we want.
Is this more storage for you? Is this more storage space for you?
This is more space for us specifically, yes.
Specifically for you?
And we have outgrown our existing.
Yeah.
So Southwest Rental and Sales has been there since two thousand. Jim Way, the original owner of that building, started it as his second location. We are the third owners. We bought in two thousand thirteen, so we've owned Southwest Rental and Sales since December of two thousand thirteen.
Maybe this is a, who's going to, who's the owner of the site? And I, I get it, Shaw, you're developing, who's going to own it?
Mike and I are both.
Okay, so future building, how, like how, how long, what are we thinking?
Three to five.
Three to five?
As soon as we can, honestly.
Yep.
Ultimately, that would be Mike's primary goal, as a plumbing company.
Yep. So once you have the capital and can figure it out, that's the deal?
Exactly. We both plan for businesses to grow, you know, create some of that kind of growing my space, we put up that second building, move down there. That's the way we're picturing it right now.
Got it.
Good to work with local companies, too. Keep them local.
Right, exactly.
I have a few points. So during the like neighborhood meeting, do you see any concerns from the adjacent neighbors regarding that outside storage? Like, I know we can't see from forty-one and we can't. Like, I know, we can't see from forty-one, and we can't see from the other side of the road, because your building will be there. So, the adjacent, immediate neighbors, are there any concerns from them regarding the outside storage?
They didn't show up, right?
Craig. We didn't have anybody show up from, for the meeting. The, the building adjacent to the south is for sale right now. The building adjacent to the north is a, is a small machine shop slash, they work on circuit boards. I guess, I don't know what the terminology is, but they do circuit boards and that type of thing. I know a few people in management over there, they don't seem to get, they seem to be happy that something might happen there. Because otherwise, it has kind of been a dumping site for years, and that type of thing, until we bought it and cleaned it up a little bit. We took down all the ash trees, so Emerald Ash Ward really taken that lot out. So we took down all the ash trees, we're working on getting all that removed off-site. But yeah, I, I haven't had any complaints, or, for the most part, everything in the neighborhood has been supported.
Another one is like, how are you storing the current, I mean, equipment right now, in your current place? Like, how are you storing in the back, outdoor storage, or everything put in inside? How are you operating right now, in the current building?
In our current space, how are we operating?
Mm-hmm, I mean, do you have any outside storage?
Storage is outside, right?
Yeah, so, we do have outdoor storage currently, but it's, it's a fairly small volume of what the building we're currently in. Our outdoor storage is, is basically just to the south of the building. Everything that is east of the building we're currently in, which is what I was trying to take pictures of, is Restoration Systems, with all of the containers and the stick booms, and then that stuff, that is, that's not our equipment.
So, what are your hours of operations, like, I mean, do you operate at the later time?
We're seven days a week, seven thirty AM to five thirty PM, Monday through Friday, eight until four on Saturday, and ten until two on Sunday.
So you won't be using like that outside storage mostly in the later part of the days, like in the nights and all? So you are not planning to have any lighting set up around that outside storage, which might?
We would have building lighting, for sure, that would, would reflect into that outdoor storage area, more so for security.
Security, yeah.
So, so cameras could pick up any movement, and that type of thing.
Okay.
And I don't know, maybe it's, maybe it's already approved, but if you look at their current facility, and all the outside storage that's being used.
Yeah, that's what like I'm trying to, yeah. So.
You know, like, not that we're trying to police anything, but at least this, at least this applicant is going to do it properly.
Yeah, I mean.
Maybe Restoration System has approvals, I don't know. But I mean, you can look on a Google map.
If it is there for one of the property, then definitely it might be for the current district, right? That's what I'm coming from. Like, another thing is, like, if we are, as we are talking about the amendment, right? I mean, if we are doing specific to this particular property, I would lean towards having a, I mean, oh, some kind of amendment across that district, with some conditions, like saying, okay, the, the outside storage should have some kind of fencing, like a few, like how we are defining the materials for the buildings, like, okay, this is the height of the maximum, height of the storage, like a ten feet, or whatever that might be. Maybe they are requesting for eight feet, someone else might request for ten feet, twelve feet, something like that. So, we might come up with some kind of standards, and some kind of materials, like, like how we come up on the building outside, these are the materials we needed, and the size of the storage as well, probably. Like, I mean, we can't have like a small building and a big storage, rather than like a, some, some might just need office and more storage, right?
Yep.
So those kind of conditions probably can help us, because we don't know, like, what will be the next future things, right? Definitely, we might be in kind of dilemma, like whether we need to approve that one, or we need to, like, still think about that. I mean, we don't want it to be biased on anything, like, probably that way, it can help us going forward to just continue approving all these things. That, that probably what I recommend.
Exactly, Commissioner Boswell, and that will be next time at the preliminary plat?
Yeah.
And I would expect that, kind of what we discussed, it'll be fence height of eight feet, it'll be no larger than the, the print of the building behind it, as they show.
Yeah.
And, and it'll be specific to this property, yeah.
Yeah.
Okay, is there any further questions for staff? So as of right now, again, we're, we're talking about is a concept plan for what we saw, outside storage was discussed, and I think people kind of get an idea where we sit, that would need approval next time. So as of now, what we need is, and I will do it, I'll make a motion to recommend approval to city council, approval of the concept plan for forty-two hundred PV, with the following eleven conditions. Is there a second?
Second.
Second.
I think Boswell beat everyone there, so, second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. October twentieth, gentlemen.
Yep. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, back to the agenda. Other business, so before we shut down, I do have some, does anyone else have any questions for staff? Talk about anything, city, other business? Okay, well, I do, for just a moment, I've been talking with staff, I've talked with Todd already, just want to let you guys know. I've been doing this for seven years, and so at the end of this year, I'm going to be stepping down. And so I will no longer be chairing the meetings. I've spoken with Todd already, as vice chair, and he's ready and willing to step in to chair role, and, and continue on with you guys. He's been here as long as I have. What was that? So, he's, he, he'll do a great job. It kind of works well, too, with how far I am in the process, and him, we're both at the same time. So they're, you know, functionality-wise, I feel like it works, instead of losing us both at the same time, and having a brand-new chair and vice chair. It's just a personal thing I've been thinking about for over a year now, and so I decided to continue on this year, and I just think it gives the city enough time to put it out there, know that we need to, that there's going to be a vacancy. And so officially, we would, as we've done last year, and I don't know if brand-new members, but we, we would vote on who was chair and, and vice chair. Typically, I think that might be done in January, after the appointments are done. However, and this is still need to be discussed with city, and how we take care of this, but that might happen in December. So there's no vacancy of who's the chair, and who's the vice, going into the new year. And so, don't have an open recommendation of vice chair right now, there's multiple people here that could do it, and maybe some of you don't want to do it, maybe some of you do, you can email me and let me know. Again, I don't make the decision, we vote on it, but obviously, my recommendation is for Todd to take over as chair. I think it's fitting as he's vice chair, and then we would just need to vote on, vote on that, and then who would be vice chair going forward, so. It's been a pleasure, it's been great, I enjoy it, I have enjoyed it, but I just think it's time now for, for me to step down at the end of the year. So, that's kind of, just giving you guys a heads up.
Well, thank you for everything you've done.
Absolutely.
Thank you for leading us for so many years, appreciate it.
You're welcome.
So, the other question then comes up, whose terms end at the end of this year?
Mine expires at the end of this year.
Yeah, Kerber, Purdy, Campbell.
Mine is ending too, I guess, right?
Yep. Boswell.
So it's like a three-years term?
It's a three-year term.
Boswell might be.
Yes, it's a, it's a three-year term.
I did only apply last year, so that's, yeah, I started in two thousand twenty-two.
You came on at the same time, I did.
You guys had reappointed last year, right?
Yeah.
Yeah, you're good, it's, I think this year, it's Kerber, Purdy, and Campbell. Yep, because the three of you are the same time.
Yeah, because we join the same time, yeah.
Yep, so you are already, you've got two more years, I think.
Yeah, that's what I.
Yeah, Commissioner Boswell, since, I, yeah, I sent out emails, I think it was, I don't know if it was earlier this week, or late last week, to the folks who, who are up for reappointment. And Commissioner Boswell, I did send one to you, so since there's a question there, I'll take another look at that.
Yeah, yeah.
And we'll, we'll figure that out.
Yeah, that's fine.
However, that needs to be.
Okay, so this, what do you know? Other than that, I don't have any other business, I don't want to hold everyone up, is there anything else? Anyone wants to discuss with staff, or any questions?
I definitely agree with you, like Todd would be definitely the right fit for the next.
Yeah, and I, and he's, we've talked about it, and he's.
He has all the experience, and yeah.
Great. So that'll, we'll figure that out officially, probably in December, or make, whatever meeting, we'll make sure we have a meeting, just in case schedule's light, so if it has to be.
Yeah, I think, you know, some of it is up, I think, to the discretion of the planning commission, as to how you would want, prefer to move forward.
Yeah.
Like Commissioner Brass was saying, I think common practice has, has been that we would wait for the city council to go through reappointments, or appointments, or, you know, whatever the, the case may be in the situation. But, you know, we're, this is a little bit of a unique situation, where, you know, we have the current chair providing advance notice, which I'm thankful for, and I think that gives the planning commission an opportunity to think through what's going to be the best process, right? To, to kind of solidify that leadership team heading into the new year. I'm certainly not opposed to bringing something forward in December, that would, you know, have you all, you know, make your recommendation. Ultimately, the council considers the planning commission's recommendation for chair and vice chair, and makes a vote on it as well, but, you know, city council is usually pretty deferential to the, to the group that's making that recommendation.
Yeah, I think that'd be.
So if we think, you know, December kind of puts the commission in the best point of stability, heading into the new year, knowing that we're going to have a new chair, I think that's absolutely appropriate. We can, we can make sure that we have that ready for the December meeting.
Yeah, and I, I agree, because chair and vice chair are going to come from here now, so if I'm gone, someone new comes on, they're not going to step in as chair, obviously, so. I think we can vote on it ahead of time, and then it gives direction to council, so they know, and that there isn't a vacancy going into the new year. So, with that, I'll make a motion to adjourn. Second. Second, all those in favor?
Aye.
We're adjourned. Motion carries.
Recording stopped.